Good morning. It is Monday, July the 20th, 2020. It's nine o'clock in the morning. And this is a special Kirk County Commissioners' Court meeting. We will come to order. Remind everybody, use your cell phones, but try to turn them to vibrate only. And a reminder that for those in the public that would like to call in, we'll receive your input. You can call 830-792-6161. And that phone is here at the bench and will be answered. For those of you that are tuning in, we have Commissioner Letts is available attending by phone, watching YouTube, and we have the telephone up on the bench that you'll hear his input. So with that, the first item on every agenda is the public input. If there's anybody that would like to address the court on a topic that is not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to address the court. For those out in the public that are not in attendance, you can call in on the number I just gave you, which is again 792-6161. Okay, we don't have anyone here that wants to address the court at this time. So let's move on with the Commissioners' comments. Start with Commissioner One.
Well, as we all know, there was a bad accident in Precinct One with three people dead and nine people injured and somebody in jail as a result. I also passed on the way home also on 16 yesterday, coming back from Stonewall, a rollover accident in Gillespie County. So I just want to remind everybody to be really especially cautious. You know, there's a yellow line in the middle of the road and it tends to stop anything. It's up to us to protect each other. So our condolences to those who lost. It was really hard on our emergency responders because they knew those folks. You arrive on a scene where somebody you know, it's tough on them. So our prayers for those families.
Precinct Two.
Let's see. Thank you, Judge. The alcoholic beverage sale petition passed at over 2,500 signatures, 2,016 required. So those have been turned in to the election folks. They'll verify that they were all registered voters. And then when that's done, they have 30 days to do that. As a matter of fact, they're required to have 30 days to do it. Bob Reeves and the election folks will come to Commissioners' Court and with a recommendation that it be put on the ballot, Commissioners' Court will then vote to put it on the ballot for November 3rd. And then the public will decide whether or not they want to have alcoholic beverage sales in Precinct Two. That's the biggie. That was, people that worked on that are to really be admired and appreciate. That was a lot of hard work by a lot of people to get it there. They sat out in those parking lots during the early voting all day long for two weeks and then on voting day, plus did a lot of special events. So kudos, tutus to them. So that's the big thing in Precinct Two.
Good. Commissioner Letts, Precinct Three?
Yeah, a couple of comments. First, I just want to let the public know that the COVID virus has been going through the Letts household, which is why I'm not in court today. We're all fine. We all very symptomatic the entire time. I've never had any symptoms. My wife has had minimal symptoms and the kids haven't shown any symptoms. So that all part of it's good. I also want to really thank and hats off to Peterson Hospital. They've been very helpful and informative the past couple of weeks on how to deal with things. It is interesting that according to the CDC guidelines, I was cleared and ready to come to court today. However, I got an additional test last week out of a bonus of caution and it came back positive, which was, which it should not have done based on the guidelines. Anyway, we're getting some more tests today, but that's kind of why I'm not in court now, why I wasn't in court last week as well. Now, as a comment that I have, it's back to an article in the Daily Times on, I think it was the 14th, and I'll quote what they said. It's an article that they wrote, I'm not sure if editorial, about polling and how the public felt about our job and such. But it said, "Commisters have consistently questioned the need for face masks and have been steadfast in their skepticism about the virus." You know, statements like that, which in my opinion are absolutely false, that this paper and other papers make, that cause everyone to be skeptical about everything. This court, myself, and I believe the majority of the Commissioners have said, "We encourage people to wear masks. We think masks are probably a good idea, but we're not going to mandate that businesses do it." That's a lot different than saying there's no need for face masks. I personally wear a face mask a great deal of the time. Either I social distance or I wear a face mask. Only time I don't is when I'm in Commissioners' Court and there I'm probably socially distanced. But it's also difficult to talk and we kind of do a lot of talking, obviously. So I just think that it's, you know, if the paper's going to report things as facts, it needs to be honest and that article was not honest. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Precinct Four?
Yes, it's getting hot and dry out there. We put the burn ban on in Precinct Four, I believe Thursday or Friday. And I know Divide and Mountain Home were busy over the weekend with some grass fires and what have you. Also, one thing that we haven't mentioned much, but I think everybody needs to be, get on board is the census. The census is going on right now and that means federal money that would otherwise not come to Kirk County if everybody was not participating. And it's really easy. It takes about 10 minutes online if you've lost the mailer that you got on it, and it's my2020census.gov. So I would encourage everybody to get on board with that. And it just helps us, helps us. A follow-up on what Commissioner Letts said about the mask. You know, we have said we're not going to enforce it, we're not going to mandate it, but we all encourage it. And I wear this when I walk through the crowd and what have you, but up here, we're spaced out and so I don't do it. But if you want to go in HEB or something, you better put one on. If you don't, order a curbside. And I know plenty of businesses that are accommodating people that don't want to wear them and will meet them out at their car or what have you, or go through drive-throughs or what have you. So that's all I got. Good.
Okay. Well, if we're going to talk about masks, I think I have consistently worn a mask, encouraged people to wear masks. But I have joined with the court in strongly recommending that people wear masks and not mandate businesses to do it. So the public needs to know that we encourage you to wear masks. So with that, let's go ahead and start our meeting. The first item on the agenda, as always these days, 1.1. Dab Thomas is going to present the report on COVID-19.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Okay, so for last week, this is week 20 that we're in for our COVID-19 inquiry. The emergency operations center has still been stood down, but we're still operating alone between myself and the city of Peterson. Call center is no longer open, but you can still call 258-1111 for some information. We had no deaths from COVID-19 the past week. Our COVID-19 data so far, and these numbers are as of Friday, I'll update it again this afternoon when I get some more DSHS numbers. Total tested by Peterson Regional is 3,110. Texas Military Forces has been 812. Nursing homes, 675. Curated Incorporated is the company that has been contracted by Department of State Health Services to do testing now instead of the Texas Military Forces. They did testing last Tuesday. They tested 747 people. I don't know, I don't have the breakdown on that yet. I'm pretty sure probably not all those are Kirk County residents, but when I get that, that number will be adjusted. So far, we've had Kirk County COVID positives to date, 277, and we have six people hospitalized at this time.
At this time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
As of Friday, if they've gotten out over the weekend, I'm not aware of that yet. Some of the active and recovered statistics, total active cases, 198. Recovered cases, 77. Fatalities, 2. Our transmission methods stats for 119 cases, that's, hadn't changed much. What is changing is our age data down there in the middle of the page from 156 cases that Peterson has tested and they've given me the results back.
Before we get into that demographic, I was looking back up at the transmission methods, and I noticed that household spread, community spread, and close contact are by far the largest ways that the coronavirus is spread.
Yes, sir.
And so, social distancing and mask and hygiene are critical.
That's correct. And so you'll, when I get these addresses, I'm starting to see several addresses around town or out in the county that are repeat addresses. So there'll be one person test positive, and then a couple of weeks later, it might be one or two more. You know, two, a couple of addresses that are within close proximity to each other on the same street. So I'm assuming that either they had neighbors over, fancy barbecues, whatever. But yeah, the household spread, community spread, and close contact are our three biggest numbers. That just tells me that we're spreading it around.
We're doing it to ourselves.
We're doing it to ourselves. Yes, sir. And the same thing for the age data, and these are on confirmed cases. That middle number there from 20 to 59 has been our biggest group and that continues to go up. The 75 to 79 group and the 80-plus group is starting to creep up as well. We had only like one or two cases of those last week and then all of a sudden we start to pick up in that elderly age group.
So another way of saying that, Dab, too, is 70% of the people less than 60 are the ones that are positive?
Yes, sir.
And a lot of those people are asymptomatic. They don't know they have it, just like Mr. Letts reported. And they're infecting the older people, the vulnerable population.
And these are confirmed cases.
And it's not intentional, but that just means that we're not exercising these recommended methods to slow the transmission of disease.
Another thing I like to look at is that age group, that's the folks around town that are working, that are the employers, employees of all these establishments that we want to try and keep in business. Yet the employees and the employers are all getting sick. So that's just something that I like to keep track on. All right, so the Texas, testing by Curated was conducted on Tuesday, July 14th, and we did 747 tests there. Texas Military Forces testing was, last one was on, will be available again on August the 8th. I'm sorry, that should be August 5th at the Hill Country Youth Event Center, but we're going to be doing some more notifications on that as we get closer. I'm not sure if that's going to be a walk-up like the last one was, or if it's going to be by appointment only.
Dab, can I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
If I could. One general comment, one, I have a lot of issues with the numbers, whether they're being reported. And this is because I've gone through this, I have now been tested twice. My wife has been tested twice. So that means those numbers according to the hospital, that's four people are positive, with the two that are positive. Additionally, I'm not sure how the presumptive positive, my both of them is a presumed positive already that they tested. So the numbers are inaccurate. I think they show a trend. But I guess it seems to me that maybe we should change the way we are coaching this in court. I don't know that it's of great value to come through and your numbers don't agree with the numbers I get from the Department of State, the Department of Health, because there's a time lag, I guess. They still said we only had one death in the county yesterday. It seems to me that we should maybe go to having you come, or maybe twice a month, instead of every, we're going over the same thing. We know the problem. People need to do to slow it down. And it just seems that we're taking an awful lot of the time asking the same thing every week to me.
It's fine with me, Commissioner. Whatever the court wants me to do, I'll be glad to do.
Now, we, there was a press release that went out this morning saying the numbers were going to be reported differently anyway.
Well, what I have done is, you saw a lot of press on Beyer County last week where they had 3,000 and some odd problems.
Thrown out.
Thrown out, yeah.
Originally counted and then thrown out.
And we've had, Kirk County has had 15 total probables to date. Now, the Department of State Health Services considers a probable case, one, an individual who's in a home with a person that is COVID positive, but they are symptomatic, they have not been tested yet, but they're still symptomatic. They consider that a probable. They also consider a probable that somebody's gone to see their primary care physician and they do the quick test, the quick swab. That's not a, what DSHS considers a confirmative test. They consider a PCR test, the nasal parangial swab or the cheek swabs, a PCR, a confirmative test. So when you go see your primary care physician, you get that quick test, they don't consider that a confirmative test. So they consider that-
Is that a waste of time?
As a probable. And I wouldn't say it's, I wouldn't say it's a waste of time, but-
Then what, what do you accomplish doing that?
Well, DSHS was reporting probables because it kind of gave us an idea of how the virus was spreading through the community. So most of the probables that we've seen, in fact, all of them have been in the same home with somebody who's been confirmed positive. You can go from probable to confirmed. We had one of those over the weekend and that number will be posted this afternoon.
So sort of bottom line, if you put plus or minus 10% on the accuracy, still the trend is significantly up.
Yes, sir. Trend is up. And I, and our numbers are based on what the information was that DSHS was giving us a long time ago before they got swamped, plus the numbers that Peterson Regional has given us.
But the message is, it's still going up significantly.
Still going up. No fatalities, other than the two that we've already had.
Dab, I'd like to backtrack, if you don't mind. These numbers, we all have these numbers in front of us and we've talked about them, but the public's not seeing them. Can you go over the age classes and the cases out of these 156 cases that Peterson is reporting and so that the people get an idea of what, you know, especially our elderly?
We put these out in our press releases as well.
Exactly.
Age less than one, age zero, ages one through nine, we've had six, 10 through 19, seven, 20 to 29, 27, 30 to 39, 29, 40 to 49, have been 21 individuals, 50 to 59. We're 27 and one fatality. 60 to 64 is 13, 65 to 69 is 7, 70 to 74 is 7, 75 to 79 is 6, with one fatality. In 80-plus, we've had six residents test positive.
So again, the summary on that is 70% of the people are less than 60?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
An over 20.
That re-existing problem. We had asked about percentages, and I don't see any of that on here, Dab, unless that's in the following pages.
Percentages.
Percentages of cases, recoveries, and so on. When you look at the percentages, it's much different than just raw numbers. It tells you a better story, a more accurate picture of what's going on. Some counties have started reporting it that way.
I haven't, I don't recall that conversation, but our, as far as our infection rate, we're at 6.02% based on 3,110 tests from Peterson, 812 from Texas Military Forces, 675 from nursing homes, 277 positives.
That's 6% of the county's population?
Six of those folks have been tested.
So say that again. 6% of-
Our infection rate is 6.02%.
Of those that have been tested?
Of those that have been tested, yes.
Okay. So of countywide, it's less than a percent?
Yes, sir.
It does help to gain some perspective. Instead of just hearing numbers and these, and positive cases and so on, who's been hospitalized, how many fatalities, which we're still at 2.
Right.
And what percentage it is of people infected in the county. So 6% of those that have been tested could sound scary until you realize that it's, there's a couple, how many, 3,000 people have been tested?
By Peterson, yes, sir. 3,100.
3,100.
And so you can take, well, you can take a look at 277 is our number. We were at, if you took the 15 probables out that I took out over the weekend, we were at 292. So I took those probables out, but I just didn't feel like it was accurate as far as our count. It just inflated it a little bit. But if you look at, what did I say our actives were? 198 cases? So about every two weeks, the Department of State Health Services considers you recovered and they will take you off that list. So all of those, I'm sure our active, total active cases is probably less than 198. I just don't, I just don't have a way to calculate that number.
Yeah, okay. Dab, have you been included in the communications going on between the counties in South Texas and the Hill Country with regard to the requests for the Department of Defense to provide an expeditionary field hospital at the Port of Corpus Christi, to bring in mobile hospitals and morgues along the border?
I did see this morning on the news where the Navy was being sent down there to run some hospitals. Yes, sir.
Well, there's a draft letter that's been, that I received this morning, and it's got my name on it. I haven't signed off on it yet, but it's going to have probably at least 30 or 40 county judges requesting the Department of Defense to bring in the necessary supplies because of the lack of hospital bed capacity, especially in the Corpus Christi and South Texas area. So while we downplay the seriousness of COVID-19 here in Kirk County, it is nonetheless still devastating and ravaging the rest of the state. So while you've done a very great, a good job managing our emergency situation here, Dab, this is still a very critical situation, especially in South Texas.
I have heard that in South Texas. McAllen, Harlingen, down there, Brownsville, those hospitals are at or over capacity.
And so is Del Rio, Evil Pass, Laredo, go straight down that border.
All the border towns and it's been suggested people are coming from Mexico because they're in bad shape and the hospitalization.
It is what it is. And the fact of the matter is, while we've done very well here in Kirk County, and you are to be commended for the job that you've done, Dab, but people need to know that this is still a very serious health crisis.
Judge, I believe one of the primary responsibilities of government is to take care of its people. However, when it becomes, when it comes to emergency management and disaster response, there's a certain amount of personal responsibility that belongs on the individual.
Sure.
So I feel like, you know, we put the information out there for the folks about how to protect themselves. It's all up to them whether or not they want to do it.
Still need to wash your hands.
It's just like wearing a helmet or a seatbelt. It's not a guarantee that it's going to save your life, but it's better than nothing.
Well, as a 45-year trial lawyer, I will tell you, in trying lawsuits to juries, people used to ask me, "What do you do?" I said, "Well, I explain it to them, but I can't make them understand it." And so we've explained it to the people and whether or not you understand it or not, that's really your responsibility.
Yes, sir.
Well, with the-
Judge, I disagree a little bit with you saying that we're not taken very seriously. I think we're taken very seriously in Kirk County. We've been very fortunate, but I think that the court, the cities, the emergency management, the hospitals have all taken it very serious, while we don't have the problem that some of the areas have. That's what should be emphasized.
I could hear what you said.
It's all good for you.
Anything else, Dab?
No, sir. If y'all will just let me know what y'all want me to report on and how often, I'll be glad to accommodate you.
I would, I did, remember last week I asked about a graph?
If I asked for a graph and my laptop would work, I could probably get you one.
Okay. Talk to IT right here.
I've already, I've already talked to you before.
And I did find- Here, where you put the percentage. Or it was just the percentage of tested-
Yes, sir.
Instead of the percentage in the county.
Oh, I could put, yeah, whatever that is.
That would be nice.
But I did have a taxpayer, a local citizen, who did it, did a plot for me. And it shows a dramatic rise that begins in mid to late June. And since then, it has just gone off the charts.
Once we opened up, everything shot straight up.
But, but, but his data was based upon PRMC's data. And what I'm really looking for is the DSHS data.
Judge, with that, okay, with the fact that it's increasing, what you just said, increasing significantly since June, I'll go to the subject of mandating. Okay? The judge, I meant the governor, have me here, Commissioner. The governor has a requirement that face masks be worn in public, except for about 12 conditions, I think, that they mentioned, except when safe distancing and people don't have to wear it under some certain conditions. So with that, what is the capability of the court to mandate that businesses and people in the county wear face masks?
We can do anything up to what the governor has done, but we cannot be inconsistent with what he's done. That's our limitation.
So can we mandate even though the governor has not mandated?
The governor has mandated.
Okay, but we-
With set exceptions.
We've talked about earlier that we have chosen not to mandate. Maybe it's time to mandate now.
What would that change? Let me ask this. What would that change that's not happening now?
Well, it would require those businesses that are not requiring face masks to require.
Who is that?
I don't know a specific one, but I'm not going to name them anyway in public.
I get that.
But there are home, there are businesses out there that do not.
We've discussed this in quite length the last two months and had people come in, and some of them are same people.
Right. And so therefore, I'm bringing it up again. I would like to make a motion that we mandate. Now, the question is, if we make that motion, if I make that motion to mandate, what does that mean? Does that mean the judge then has to mandate? Because we, the Commissioners' Court, can mandate. All we can do is, as the judge, my understanding, to mandate.
I think that's right. And my position has been consistent all along that I do not want to enter a mandate or an order that is inconsistent with the wishes of this court.
Well, so therefore, I'll make a motion that we mandate face masks be worn in the public, consistent with the restrictions and exceptions that are in the governor's order, but it's mandating for all businesses in Kirk County. That means inside the city and outside the city. Now-
So you're, you're making a motion that we have, we, that would be, this would be a recommendation to me to enter an order, an executive order, that mirrors the governor's order for mandatory mask?
Yes.
What's the point? It's redundant?
It's not redundant because he's not, he's not, if it's redundant, then it's useless, okay? That's my question. But we made the comment earlier in this, in this agenda item that we have not mandated, okay? So-
But the governor did.
Well, if the governor, if it's redundant, then we don't need to do it. So I need clarification. The public doesn't know it, okay?
You're right.
The public thinks we're, the public thinks we're just strongly recommending. Well, if the governor has mandated it, then it doesn't do any good to mandate. But if the governor hasn't, if we can put more teeth into it by mandating it, then that's what I'm taking a motion.
Well, let me clarify. There's a difference between enforcement of an order and entering an order.
I haven't talked about enforcement yet.
And the sheriff's argument all along, and I believe he is correct, I wish it, I wish he wasn't, but I believe he is, that the order as drafted by the governor is unenforceable because it prohibits the detention of anybody for not wearing a mask. And that includes stopping anybody and asking them why you're not wearing a mask. So by the inclusion of one word in the governor's order, he completely emasculated the mandatory aspect of the order. He has not retracted that. He has not changed that. He has not given counties or local mayors the authority to do anything inconsistent with what his order is. So if we enter this order, we do a mirror, that's why I was asking if it's a mirror image order. If it's the exact same as the governor's, we've entered a mandatory order that is unenforceable because you can't stop people and ask them why they're not wearing a mask.
Well, enforcement, enforcement's not our prerogative. That's the sheriff's prerogative of how to enforce. Well, we can mandate and it's up to him to enforce to the extent that he wants to, needs to, or can. So.
That's not accurate, Commissioner. I mean, we know that the governor's order says that the security can't be enforced. So what, I mean, that makes no sense to me to enforce it, to mandate an order that can't be enforced. It's not the sheriff's decision, it's the governor's decision.
It's the sheriff's, is sheriff's position to enforce. It's the sheriff's, is sheriff's position to enforce.
I'm against this court doing anything that's form over substance. I, I don't agree with that. I don't, I think it would just strictly be, it's useless.
Well, let me do it by this way, I'll make a motion, and it'll see if there's a second.
I'll second it, just so that we can, we can go on record so the public can know exactly where we stand on it. Floor's open for discussion.
All right. Two weeks ago, we had over twenty people come in here to give us their opinions on mandating masks. And we voted it down, voting not to mandate.
Well, technically, that's another thing, that's another misimpression people have. We did not vote it down.
You're right.
What we did, when we saw that there was a, an overwhelming majority of the court that were against mandatory masks, I made a motion that we unanimously recommend, strongly recommend, wearing the mask. And that passed unanimously. And that's where this court is.
Okay, and then later in the week, the governor came out with his new order that, you know, it mandated that businesses require masks. So all that discussion we had then was for not, because he overrode us a few days later. And then somehow we just got off on masks last week, and it didn't go anywhere. So I don't know why we keep bringing this up, I mean.
Well, because things keep getting worse. That's the reason. So should we take additional action since things continue to get worse?
Well, y'all got a motion and a second.
Well, the purpose of the second is, we, this needs to be an ongoing dialogue with the public. This is not a static, once-in-a-lifetime, make a decision, move on. This is an ever-changing crisis situation that we're going through. And so we need, I think we need to be open to talking about it, because if we don't talk about it, they're gonna talk about us, I guarantee it.
Well, Doug's still here, and correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, that they said the more testing, the more cases.
Absolutely.
And the more cases as this goes up, and you're saying that things have changed, and I would disagree with that, and if you take the overall numbers, as the numbers expand exponentially, you're gonna have more of this. But the percentages remain pretty much the same.
Well, but listen, and, and I don't argue with you about that, or I don't disagree with you. But let's look at what we talked about, what's happening down in South Texas. Their, their hospital beds were full. The deaths in
And they're coming up here.
Right, they're gonna come this way. The deaths, the deaths are, the deaths are increasing in, in some states, and they're increasing in Texas, okay? And probably along the border, yeah, that's a special issue. But all I'm saying is, is with this, all we can do is put another level of assurance that it's trying to move away from people getting COVID-19. Now, to enforce it is gonna be difficult, and I understand it. And I, you know, I think putting something in that's not, that's gonna be difficult to enforce is one thing, but not enforceable is a different thing. So I think it can be enforced, but it'd be, you know, very, very difficult.
Well, I think, one of the things, this is just a comment about enforcement. The governor's order is not enforceable. I, I, I say that, that's my legal opinion, I don't think it's enforceable.
Right.
It, it's up to a court to make that determination. I don't get to just individually decide it's not enforceable. That, that read enforceability to me.
Enforceable or legal?
Enforceable.
Enforceable.
There's nothing illegal about the order that I know.
Right, right, okay.
In fact, I haven't heard any suggestion that the order is illegal. But I, I do believe that it is unenforceable. But right now, we do not have a mandatory mask-wearing order in place. If we did, we know that there are going to be people that do not wear, that will not wear the mask. And a lot of them are for health reasons, which we certainly recognize. And some of them, I think, I believe are for reasons of civil disobedience. They just disagree with what the governor's done, and they choose not to wear a mask as an act of oppositional defiance almost. And that's okay. I'm not saying that people don't have the right to do that, they do.
But you don't have to have that mask on if you are six feet away from somebody. So that needs to be remembered, that gets left out of these discussions.
No, it, no, it didn't get left out, I said a while ago.
I'm talking about what the judge is saying right now. I, I agree with him.
Yeah, okay.
This idea that you have to have a mask on at all times, you're supposed to keep separated from somebody six feet or have on a mask.
Well, I think everybody at this courthouse knows that I don't wear this mask in my office. When you come in to talk to me, I don't have a mask, and we sit at least six, probably ten, twelve feet apart to talk about things. And I think that's pretty much the rule here at the courthouse.
Sure.
Or should be the rule.
Question I have, this is either the Commissioner's motion or the judge, my understanding is that all we can do by our businesses to require employees to wear the masks, and get in papers to wear the masks, we can't require the public to wear them. So is that not correct? Do we have new authority, that we can now require the public to wear masks?
I think, I think the order, and I, I've got it sitting in a folder on my desk that I could go get, but I think it says, "Businesses and buildings and offices open to the public." Am I?
Is that? It's her mind notes, so please get them back.
What is that? Can you explain what that means?
She has problems.
Destruction companies, do they have to wear a mask when they're on a job?
Places open to the public is the language used in the governor's order, which would include the courthouse. If this court adopts an order that mirrors the governor's order, the question then becomes enforceable, is the sheriff gonna enforce it? What this judge could do is, Judge Kelly could order everyone who enters the courthouse to wear a mask, which would make it a little different from the order. However, I think that the governor's order says that your public places
Let me, let me read the mandated part of the order. And there, there are one, I don't have the copy of exactly how many exceptions there are. Well, this is what it says. It says, "Every person in Texas shall wear a face covering over the nose and mouth when inside a commercial entity or other building or space open to the public."
And then he goes on.
That's what he Well, then he says, "Or when in an outdoor public space, wherever it is not feasible to maintain six feet of social distancing from another person, not in the same household, provided," and then he goes through his thirteen exceptions or however many there are.
Right.
That's what it says. Now, the, the matter that's been up for interpretation, and this is just the lawyer, I'm splitting the hairs for you, is the part of the sentence that talks about "when in an outdoor space" also talks about not having to wear a mask if you're socially distanced. The first part of the sentence that talks about the buildings does not say that. There are interpretations, I know, I've talked to some of the elected officials here at the courthouse, that interpret that to mean if you're six, you're socially distanced six feet apart in the courthouse or in a building, you don't have to wear a mask. There are others that look at that and say, "That's only if you're outside." So I'm not here to make
Which brings up sense. That's illogical.
But that's
Absolutely not, I think it's entirely logical.
...of attorneys who give advice to local governments, including the regional judges who just sent out a message to judges who have to comply with office of court administration. They made it separate in their message to those judges. You've gotta comply with the rules of no hearings in person unless it's necessary. But also, they added, and the governor's order says, you gotta make sure people are wearing masks. So that supports my interpretation of it, that even when you're in here and you're six feet apart, you gotta wear a mask, because it's a public space required by the governor.
So say that last thing again, Counsel, is your interpretation then? Because it's hard, hard to understand you with your mask on.
Yeah.
Because I'm speaking, I can have my mask on.
Right.
That's one of the exceptions.
Yeah.
The rule, I believe, that the governor has placed on us is that when you're in a public place, you have to wear a mask. And if you're in an outside space and can't maintain six feet of social distance, you have to wear a mask, if you're not in the same household, with the exceptions. But I don't believe that the, unless you can maintain six feet of social distance, applies to the provision that says, "Wear a mask in public." Spaces, public spaces.
And in, in the interest of promoting this debate, because I think the public needs to understand the issues, there's a difference of opinion in how to interpret the governor's order. Does it mean that you have to wear a mask when you're outside, but only when you're within six feet of each other? I think we all agree on that. But it's not clear, I would say it's ambiguous, as we lawyers like to use the phrase. It's ambiguous whether or not that order is intended to mandate the wearing of a mask at all times inside public buildings, public spaces. And what, what, what the county attorney is saying is, her experience in working with her colleagues in the field are interpreting it that when inside the public building, when you're inside and, and around other people, you have to have that mask on. Right?
Yes, sir.
That's what she's saying.
The public spaces of this building, in my opinion, you're required to wear a mask, even if you can stay six feet away from someone.
So to use my example, when I'm in my office, and you come in and you sit halfway across the room from me, and we talk, and I don't need to have a mask on.
That, that's right, and that's
But if I walk outside to go to the restroom across the hall, I put that mask on.
Yes, sir.
And if I don't, there's somebody that reminds me I don't have it on.
Well, so if I, if I listen to all that, it says that, that the mandate by Commissioner's Court would not add anything to what the governor requirement is. If that's true, then there's no reason to mandate, because the governor's already mandated, so.
Well, I think, the county attorney's nodding her head.
Right.
And I'm not here in capacity as a lawyer, but I don't think there's anything we can do that would be any stronger than what the governor has already done.
Well, we just had a very good discussion, though, so.
And that was, that was the reason I seconded your motion?
Right.
Because we need, we need this discussion.
Good, okay.
The public needs to understand this.
Well, if it, if, if it doesn't do any good for the court to have a mandate order, then I withdraw my motion, because it's not, it wouldn't do any good. The governor's already laid down the requirement. All we have to do is follow the governor's requirement.
Correct. And if the governor, and this is in appeal to the governor, if the governor decides that he'd like to have his order enforceable, and he removes the word detained, then we have an enforceable order. But as long as the word detained is in that order, it's not enforceable.
Well, but I, I was separating the enforcement thing from the mandate.
Now, he can't change it for thirty days, can he?
That I don't know.
I think you can inter-order it.
I think he has it.
I think he can. I think he can modify it.
He's amended it several times.
In this latest one?
Oh, not the latest.
See, now, here's, here's my issue, and there are exemptions to this. There are eleven of them, at least maybe twelve exemptions. There's a part A and B for the eleventh exemption.
Yes.
So that kind of, to my way of thinking, voids all the rest of it.
Well, the order is not void.
Doesn't have to have a mask, because magically after you're nine, when you blow out those tin candles, you don't, now you gotta have a mask every birthday, right? That kind of stuff doesn't make any sense to me, and so once you, once you make exceptions, you've voided out all the rest of it, pretty much.
It does not void it.
If you sit in the judge's office, if you two can sit together and talk in that office without a mask on in this building, you've just voided everything you said earlier.
It's not a public space. It's not a public space.
It's not a public space.
It's in this building.
But his office isn't a public space, just like mine's not a public space.
This courtroom is a public space.
Okay, well, there you go, that's an exception.
Your office is not a public space.
You make the exceptions, and so you pretty much void the whole darn thing.
Well, I take exception with the word void, and that's the lawyer in me, because that has a very distinct meaning at law, and the order is not voided.
I understand that void means to vacate and so on. And so I get that. But I'm saying it tends to nullify the effectiveness of the overall apparent overall desire or purpose. Then you go, okay, well, if you have these exceptions, those are okay, and you're always See, it gives people a false sense of security. And to do something else at this point from this court would only be to give another layer of false sense of security, no extra protection whatsoever.
I don't dispute that we can't give them extra protection. And, but the false sense of security, that started when we had essential and non-essential industries that could work.
Yes, sir.
And everybody was, was parsing words to make, make sure they came within the exception, and it was virtually meaningless.
I agree.
But it wasn't void, but it was very difficult to enforce.
Everybody's job was essential at that.
Yeah.
So what we're really saying, folks, and I'm talking to the public here, this is an issue ultimately of personal responsibility. Each one of us has to do the right thing. What we in our own hearts and minds and our souls believe to be the right thing, to protect yourself and to protect others, and that's as good as we're gonna get.
My only point was, if there's anything this court can do to enhance the safety, we should consider it. So our discussion said, if there is anything relative to a mandate, it lets us enhance safety. So therefore, we don't need to take any action. The action is already there by virtue of the governor's order.
Judge, I got one more thing, since we're on the subject of masks.
He's still here.
Yeah, I know. And everybody keeps talking about the effectiveness of the masks versus COVID-19. I've already compared it to a chingling fence topped in mosquitoes. But the DSHS regionated update on Friday had this document in there. And the July fourteenth issue of the Center for Disease Control, Morbidity and More Touted Weekly Report reiterates the value of face coverings by highlighting a situation in Missouri which happened with two hairstylists who exposed one hundred and thirty-nine clients before learning of their diagnosis. Both stylists and clients wore face masks, and there were no symptomatic secondary cases as a result of the exposures. Among sixty-seven clients tested for SARS-CoV-2, all test results were negative. Adherents to the community's and company's face covering policy likely mitigated spread of the virus. Stylist A worked for eight days with respiratory symptoms before receiving a lab confirmed COVID-19 diagnosis. Stylist B developed respiratory symptoms after both stylists interacted unmasked between clients. During all interactions with clients, stylist A and B wore double-layered cotton face coverings or surgical masks. Previous studies show that both surgical masks and homemade cloth face coverings can reduce the aerosolization, there's a word for you, virus into the air and onto surfaces. Although no studies have examined SARS-CoV transmission directly, data from previous epidemics support the use of universal face coverings as a policy to reduce the spread.
And that's from them?
Centers for Disease Control, this, this is happening in Missouri.
And you received that from?
Department of State Health Services, Richland, A, update, I get it A.
So that, that's the official position?
Yes, sir.
But they're still conflicting. They, in interpretation and test, legitimate test results
They didn't actually use COVID.
Let me finish, okay, on types of masks. In cloth masks, I think there's a lot of studies that say they're not very effective, multi-layered, they are. But I think the bottom line is they're still scientifically conflicting statements on, on the value of masks.
Well, I'll go back to my statement, you think better than nothing.
Yeah.
Somebody did send me a picture over the weekend of a couple people on a motorcycle wearing a mask and no helmet, so they're doing their part.
That's to keep the bugs out of their mouth.
Wasn't wearing a helmet, but he had a mask on.
Yeah, yeah, there you go.
For different dangers.
There's a quick comment about masks, and I think there's a question, the masks help your odds of not getting it. I mean, I think you can still get it. You know, what's interesting is between Karen and I, this is a anecdote, by looking at everything, and when we likely got it, we got it from different sources. We didn't get it at the same time, even though we came down and sent this relatively same time. But the masks are important, and what's also, I think we need to keep up pressing hand washing. John Hopkin just put out a survey, a study this morning, this says hand washing is probably as important as masks. So I think it's overall innovation, it's critical in any method. And that's what we need to really take care of, masks and, and hand washing, being, being clean.
Well, I, I think one of the things that, I believe it's all the way back in February, a furnace room doctor in New York City said, I thought very clearly, he said, "I will not get COVID-19." And he said, "The reason I won't, because I'm not gonna touch my face." So that's hand washing, that's keeping your hands away from your face. But I thought that was pretty profound of him to say, "I will not get it because."
All right.
And I, somebody should check with him today and see if he's, if he's got it.
Make sure.
All right.
Okay, thanks, Doug.
Okay.
Have a good day.
Thanks, sir. Let's quickly do item one point two. Does anybody want to make a motion to terminate the emergency proclamation that I put in place back in March twenty-four? If not, I don't think we do, right? Okay, so let's move on. Finally, Julie, sorry. One point three, presentation of the Texas Historical Commission's Distinguished Service Award to Kirk County Historical Commission.
Good morning. I'm gonna wear my mask when I leave here. Thank you all for letting me come before you one more time. We're really, the Historical Commission, we're honored again to receive this award for the twelve for the 12 consecutive year. There were 79 counties out of 105 that were approved. We have 60 members that contribute in many ways to our success. One of them is my vice chairman, Charlie McElane. Our commission was founded in 1972, and this is our 45th year in existence. We're grateful to the men and women that worked to create this organization, and they left us a legacy to protect and preserve the many photos, documents, and collections that we have today. I don't know if you know this, but they're stored at the archives at Shriners University and are available to the public, plus what we have in our downstairs storeroom, which is packed to the hilt. In our present atmosphere in our country, it's even more important that we protect our purpose, protecting our history of Kirk County. These past few months, as we know, in really unusual, we had to cancel our meetings in our second year of our successful summer history camp, but we have not been idle. Leroy Slecty and several others have inspected and documented the condition of all 106 historical markers in the past few months, despite the heat, mosquitoes, and chiggers. Hunter DeSanger, Boy Scout Troop 111, has used this information to refurbish markers to qualify for his Eagle Scout designation. Jeannie Berger, she's our marker chair, and she submitted applications for historical markers for the 100-year-old Garrett Insurance and Lee Mason and Sons Auto Sales, which is the vocal building. The Kirk County Historical Commission continues to work with the Kirk County Area Convention and Visitor Center, and we are creating an expanded map of historic curville denoting buildings, homes, and neighborhoods that'll be available to visitors and local citizens. We hope to add East and West Kirk County to this project. Also, Terry Farley, she's our cemetery committee chair. She also holds the position of Vice President of the Hill Country Archaeological Association, and she's a designated archaeology steward for the Texas Historical Commission. She's working with THC, their cemetery preservation program, and John Benedict from the Kendall County Historical Commission to locate lost cemeteries of Kirk County. So far, they have worked on the Con Cemetery, the Blank Cemetery, the Bishop Server Cemetery, Edmonds slash Lane Two cemeteries, and they do measurements, the inscriptions, epitaph, and make photos and diagrams of all these cemeteries. And they also have submitted a notice of existence to the county deed records and to the Texas Historical Commission. Even though the virus has kept us from our official meetings, we continue to serve the county to protect and preserve our historic and cultural resources for the youth, education, enjoyment, and appreciation for present and future generation. And we really thank you for your support and hope that you will give us a little bit more money next year. I might suggest that use some of the funds that we did not use this year instead of appropriating more funds, so I don't know if that would be an appropriate way, but anyway, we cannot continue to function because we're not a fundraising organization. Anyway, I thank you for your support.
Thank you, Julie.
And here is your certificate that we want to return to you. Very proud of what you've done. Ms. Leonard?
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 1.4, Consider, Discuss, and Take Appropriate Action to Reassign Global Spectra Employees Following Texas Governor's Declaration of a State of Disaster for All 254 Counties in the State of Texas on March 13 and subsequently renewed or amended by the local state of disaster due to a public health and economic emergency proclamation that was signed by me on March 24 and extended until terminated by order of the Kirk County Commissioners Court on March 30, 2020. What this is, is we had a conversation with Jake, and as you know, we voted last week to keep the Youth Event Center open, even though there's certain risks associated with that. But there's a tremendous drop-off in the availability and use of the Agbar, Youth Event Center. And he has offered for he himself and his employees to be available to us, to be reassigned, and to work on COVID-related matters such as cleaning, deep cleaning, and things here at the courthouse, et cetera. Am I getting this right, Ms. Shelton?
I have not heard this.
Okay. Who was?
I was there.
Okay, I'm trying to remember, who was at the meeting? The sheriff was there, you were there?
Yes, sir, I was there.
And so to do that, it's going to need Commissioners Court approval, this would be on a part-time basis. Their own salary was Spectra anyway, but they don't have enough to do there, so they're offering their services to be available to help us with county responsibilities.
Do they need any kind of certification to do what you're talking about?
Cleaning? I don't think so. Whatever's required, we would ask them to do.
So there's no additional cost to the county?
No. This is just reassigning personnel to put them to work where they're needed.
John, have you talked to Jake on this?
I talked to Jake. He didn't think this was going to be discussed, what he told me last night. I think we need to look at that contract. I don't have a problem with him doing it, and I'm sure Jake would be agreeable to, but I don't see where, how this is in the contract, so it would take a contract amendment, I think from Spectrum to allow us to reassign Spectrum employees, because they're not our employee.
Well, he's the one that brought it up.
So it's more like a volunteer.
I'm sure he did, I mean, but I just think that we need to make sure it's contractually we can do it.
Absolutely. But this was just to get this on the radar screen, that I really applaud what they're doing.
So is it a better term that they're volunteering to do this?
I think that is.
As opposed to reassigning?
That's exactly what I was.
See, if they're volunteering, that's a different thing. Reassigning, I don't know what that means.
This conversation started when we had the discussion with the judge in Rusty about the large events that were scheduled to come out to the Hill County Event Center, and so this was put on the agenda in the event that the court decided to close the event center. And so I think that Jake offered it up in order to make sure that he could keep his staff, that they had something to do in the event that it closed, or that events were reduced by so much that they couldn't stay busy enough out there. He said that they are doing great things out there to make sure that the events are happening and that it's clean and when they do happen and after. So I think this is just in case. It provides all an opportunity.
But I still look at it as volunteer. I don't understand.
Exactly.
We can figure out how to parse the words if it gets to that. But this is something that would be part of the COVID grant. If we paid them to do COVID cleanup work here at the courthouse.
If we pay them.
If we pay them.
Okay. So that's what this is about.
Then I'd want to know what the effectiveness of cleaning up here, because the technical community says you leave the virus laying overnight on the surface and it's dead. So what's it doing?
If they need something to do, they can go down to CAM and help out.
There you go.
If they're just getting antsy.
You know, my position on this is, if we're going to do something, I think Jake needs to be in here, maybe we pass on it or reword it.
To put this in context, the conversation with Jake and the county attorney and county sheriff and myself was with regard to what was going on at the Youth Event Center. And the agendas for last week, the 13th, and this week, the 20th, had to be prepared and posted well in advance. And our court coordinator was going on vacation, and I instructed her, get the agendas prepared, and she did, and she got them posted. She was here late before she went on her vacation doing it all.
Sure.
But this is when we were anticipating the closure of the Youth Event Center and what we're going to do with the personnel.
We don't need to take any action on that.
Right.
I think it was Mr. Harris, we should pass on this till next week, and then we've looked at the contracts a little bit, and also reimbursements, and get Jake in the room as well.
If these guys are paid employees and their contract is with Spectrum, I don't see how we get involved in that at all.
Exactly.
Extra things for them to do. I don't think it's a bad idea.
All right.
They're full-time employees, and that would, that contract.
Opens up a can of worms.
Yeah. Their contract to do a specific thing.
Okay, well, let's move on to item 1.5, Consider, Discuss, and Take Appropriate Action on Rescheduling the Salary Survey. Ms. Doss?
Good morning. I provided, or Sam Hines from Public Sector provided a memorandum update of what the changes that might occur if we were to proceed with the comp study. I don't know if you've had a chance to review this, so I will highlight the big points.
Why don't you take off your mask, I'm having a hard time understanding.
Okay. So I'll just, I'll highlight, I'll summarize his memorandum. So in lieu of onsite visit, they're recommending launching the study via email communication that will contain a custom video link to an online position analysis questionnaire. Video will explain what that's all about. And for those employees that don't have a computer, they will be given a paper copy, and the employees will have about two weeks to complete this. They're thinking about starting mid-August, so the employees will have two weeks latter part of August, and then the supervisors will have an additional week for their component. And then, so three weeks from mid-August or whenever we decide to start, that's when Public Sector will receive, and they'll start beginning the process of job classification. They do recommend waiting until October 1. This is when many agencies will be updating their pay plans for the new fiscal year, so we want the most up-to-date and current relative for comparables. So this is just for your consideration to get this started. I know Commissioner Moser, you sent me an email about if this could be ready for this fiscal year. I visited with the auditor, and we didn't think that's what the goal was intended because, you know, I don't think, I don't know if we can afford to make those changes, but we will have them in plenty of time for next fiscal year, and I'm not sure, depending on how many changes are needed, that y'all would agree to do, make all of them at once. So it will be up to you all to decide what we could handle in the next year or two.
Well, was the schedule originally to be consistent with this budget?
Yes.
And then COVID-19?
Correct.
So what we'd be doing is pushing off for a whole nother year?
Correct.
Okay, my question is, they're going to meet with individuals one-on-one, okay? Right?
Well, we know.
No, according to this.
They were, but not now.
No, they were.
They were.
Yeah, they were. So why can't they still do that?
Yeah.
Why can't they still meet one-on-one, just like they originally planned to? They don't have to shut down the world.
Well, I mean, they're not traveling. And they can perform these over Zoom meetings.
Okay, so that's the answer.
Yes.
So they can't.
They're trying to, they're trying to keep them traveling. So they will conduct these Zoom meetings.
You answered my question. They can't, because they can't be here.
Right.
And the price would be the same, I would say.
That's pretty simple.
Excuse me?
The price would be the same.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And Sam Hines is available via cell phone because he can answer any other specific questions. He's waiting.
Okay, well, I just didn't understand that. They're not going to meet face-to-face because they're not going to travel, period. So that's...
Well, I don't know if that's carved in stone, but I mean, in the way everything is, I think they're trying to limit their travel.
Well, travel's one thing, meeting one-on-one is a different thing.
Right.
That can be done.
Sam can speak to that if we want to call him. I don't, you know, I don't want to speak for him.
Yeah.
His long letter, he didn't say anything about travel. He didn't say anything about, they don't want to be here.
Right.
They just said about all this fancy stuff they have, that they can do it without being face-to-face.
Right.
Well, I don't buy that they can't do it face-to-face, okay? If they can be here, because they can still be sick.
We went through all this discussion and approval and all this with the assumption that we were going, understanding they were going to meet with everybody. I'm not real wild about eliminating that one-on-one.
And they can still meet with everyone via Zoom. We could get departments together.
But they can't do it by, by issue is, we're putting it off for a whole nother year.
Yeah.
Okay? That's, and now we just now hear about it on July 13.
Well, if you start.
Oh, no, no, we've heard about, we discussed this a couple of months ago.
Did we about them not coming in?
We're postponing it.
Right.
We're postponing it, but not.
You were going to postpone it.
For the next fiscal year.
Okay, my misunderstanding.
Well, and if we were to start mid-August...
This is, and just to clarify, put this in context, we put off the salary schedule knowing to the next fiscal year a couple of months ago. Two, three months. I'm losing track of time in this thing, but we did it. What she's bringing to us today is their remedial recommendation.
Okay.
This would be the alternative, that they could do it remotely.
Correct.
Okay. I just didn't realize we'd push it off for a year.
Yeah, but by next year, you're not talking about this upcoming budget, you're talking about the budget for 2122.
FY 2122.
2122.
Yeah.
We decided that we couldn't squeeze it in, it would be too difficult to do.
I think it's better not to do it this year anyways.
Yeah, and that's what we decided, and so.
Right.
All she's doing is saying, they're ready to get started, it will take effect next year, but they're ready to get started, they just want to do it remotely, which we need to consider.
And this memorandum does state that they're hoping to be completed by late November, depending on the availability of survey data, so it's late this year.
It was between them and another outfit that we listened to.
Right.
And I can tell you, I would probably go with the other outfit if they could come visit one-on-one with people.
I think they were from North Carolina, weren't they?
I know, but, you know, you might relay that.
The thing is, we're not contracted with them, so we can't.
Yeah, we are contracted. Well, but this has changed things.
And I don't want to speak for them, that's why I wish we could get Sam on the phone, because if we really, really want them to travel, there's a very good chance that they will. This is more for our safety, you know, they're, and both of our safeties, so, I mean, I think that this is, if this is what we want.
I think the consensus that I'm hearing from this court is, we're very interested in getting a salary study done. We think that's important for the employees. But at the same time, the effectiveness of any salary survey or study that we do would be much better in person rather than remote. And I think that's, I think I've heard that consistently from each one of you. And if that's the case, maybe what we do is report back to them following today's Commissioners Court meeting, but that's kind of where we are. And so we appreciate the proposal that they've made, but we're not ready to sign off on that unless we just absolutely have to. And we're still more optimistic about the fall than perhaps they are.
Okay. Would you like to call them and ask those questions now?
I don't think there's a question, it's just a comment.
Right.
Yeah, just let them know.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
See where it goes from there.
It seems to me that we should draft a response, a written response to them, send it to them, and, you know, give them our criteria. I think some of what they said makes sense of having some of it done by video, but I also agree with what I hear, most of the court's saying that we need to have a, part of this has to be in person, and I think that we just need to reiterate that to them, and if they're not willing to accommodate, we put it out forbid again. I think we have time to do that.
And I think we've got another week or two to be able to talk to these people, try to get these bugs worked out, if that's what we decide to do.
And they have done everything possible to be accommodating for whatever we need, whenever we need it. They're like five minutes, they're answering my emails and calls, so I think that they will go overboard to work with us.
And this input from the court is by no means criticism of any kind of what they done. We appreciate what they're trying to do, we just think that it would be a better survey for us if we did it in person.
Okay, I will definitely relay that.
Okay.
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item 1.6 on the agenda. I'm trying to hurry us through here. One is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on the use of tax anticipation note for the purchase of real property. Mr. Lenz? Mr. Letts?
This is on the agenda based on the executive session we had two weeks ago that if we're going to use the tax anticipation note, we need to explain to the public what we're doing. And that's why it's not really my agenda. I told Jody to put it on the agenda so it could be discussed. Obviously, it's difficult for me to technically leave on this when I'm not present. I think the judge, you're certainly very familiar with, you know, the process of the tax anticipation note. Or we can defer this for another week and then we can do that.
I think it's probably better to defer it. The CIP is working feverishly to try to get their recommendations to this court together. And they're meeting weekly now instead of bi-weekly. And I think it'd be better to discuss when they come in with their whole analysis of where they think we are with these things.
That's fine.
So we'll pass that. Let's go on to the approval agenda. We need to pay the bills. Michelle Thompson?
Invoices for today's consideration include Kerr County, five hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars, ninety-nine cents. Therefore, twelve thousand, nine hundred sixty-nine dollars, ninety-one cents. Adult probation, eleven thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars, twenty-seven cents. Gymnastics probation, eighteen thousand, nine hundred fifty-three dollars, eight cents. County clerk fees, one hundred and twenty-four dollars. And the one ninety-eight DA forfeiture, two hundred nine dollars, fifty-three cents.
We'll pay the bills as presented by the auditor.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Moser, seconded by Commissioner Harris to pay the bills as presented. Is there any other discussion? If there being none, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous? Jonathan, did you raise your hand?
Yes.
Five zero.
I will, I go against one of these. I'm in favor of all of them.
Okay. Budget amendments?
We have two today. Both line item transfers in their own departments. One for county engineer and one for records management or archives, records archiving.
And this is all routine at the end of the budget cycle like we are, right, sir? Okay.
I'm ready for approval.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Blue, seconded by Commissioner Moser to approve the budget amendments as presented. Is there any discussion? Those in favor, say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
There you go.
Late bills?
We have, for late bills, on the district clerk fees, twenty-seven thousand, five hundred twenty-two dollars, sixty-eight cents.
What is 1045 again?
It is the district clerk fees. So when she raises my hand, they go there, and then when you...
In that section.
Yes.
Need for approval?
Okay.
Second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Blue, seconded by Commissioner Harris to approve the payment of late bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, five zero. Auditor reports?
We have in front of you the graphs for the June revenues and expenditures. And we have collected in the general fund about ninety-one percent of our revenues at this time for fire protection. We're at about ninety-seven percent of our revenues. Road and bridge, we're at seventy-one percent. Keep in mind that of that seventy-one percent, seven hundred thousand comes from general fund, and so we have not paid that out at this time. Indigent services, we've collected everything we thought we would. I think we got a higher repayment on some of those since last year. The tobacco settlement, that's the one that we put in there. And then on debt service, we're at about eighty-eight percent. On sales taxes for the month of June, we collected about three hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And we already know for the month of July, we're going to be collecting four hundred ten thousand, six hundred thirty-three dollars and five cents, which is still higher than what we anticipated. And on expenditures for the general fund, we've expended about sixty-three percent of our budgeted expenditures. And then on fire protection, we've spent about eighty-two percent. Road and bridge, fifty-nine percent. Indigent services, about forty-four percent. And debt service, we're at about eighty-four percent.
That's pretty impressive. On sales tax, about fifty thousand dollars more per month than the previous year. Four-ten versus three-fifty ballpark.
Well, I think we've kind of discussed. I think some of that is that people are buying at home.
Yeah.
And then people in the rural areas outside from us are coming in here to buy.
And that's good.
Which is good.
Shop located.
Okay, good report. 2.5, monthly reports?
None.
Okay. 2.6, court orders?
I got them. I got court orders thirty-eight, one sixty-six through thirty-eight, one seventy-seven. And they all look good. I move for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made by Commissioner Harris, seconded by Commissioner Blue to approve the court orders as presented. Any other discussion?
Did we have two sessions? Did you go for two sessions? Or just the last week? Because we still have the session from July sixth, which I sent to Commissioner Letts.
Okay, well, I don't have it.
Okay, so we'll do those.
Next slide.
So the motion again was for thirty-eight?
One sixty-six through one seventy-seven.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, information agenda?
We need a vote.
Did we vote?
Oh, a vote, okay. Those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. Unanimous?
Aye.
Five zero. Any status reports from department heads?
Yes, sir, concerning the, or, good morning, gentlemen. Yes, concerning the sprayers that we talked about last week. And that's about a number of which we would need. I think we would need two handheld sprayers and at least two backpack sprayers. Now, the event center, the fellows out there was also wondering, would they be covered under the COVID grant money as well? For them to purchase one?
I'm getting a yes, nod from the auditor.
If they're using it for the county building, my understanding is that we can't take that as a valid COVID expense for the grant.
Okay, next slide. So is that more then? Another one for us or two, or just...
That would, I included that one also. So it would be a total of four units that would be necessary.
Two handheld and two backpacks, right? And what about the supplies?
Given the amount of that might be needed at the Agbor, there's two different volume amounts that could be purchased. One is the fifty-five gallon drum. That's one thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars. Also, there's a fifteen gallons that you can purchase for four hundred and ninety-five.